Hello, are you there? Let's see. Hi, Guadalupe. Guadalupe, can you hear me? This is gonna be kind of difficult if we can't come first with each other, but let's just start here. I don't know if you can see me or not. But in the PPR, the first domain and the third domain are the most important for you to sort of like concentrate on, to look over and to become fluent with those particular competencies. Looks like we're gonna get one more, let's see. Can't hear anything, okay. Neither can I, can't see you or I can't hear you, okay. One moment, let me, let me try. One moment, I'm just waiting for the computer to... It says I'm connecting, I'm not sure what the deal is. I'm so sorry, this is happening. Let's run a test. Can you hear anything that I'm saying, Guadalupe? No, still no, nothing? You can hear me? Okay, I'm not sure why I have the difficulties, Lupe raised your hand. I'm gonna run a test. I do not, I don't know. Can you hear me? Lupe, can you hear me? Let me see, let me see about getting you that number. Here's the meeting ID, it is "Always use PMI for instant message on the computer", that's different, I'm not sure what that is, let me find you a different... Let me... What time? Let me find you the number, so we can try that from the phone instead. I'm not sure why you still can't hear me. Here's the meeting ID, the meeting ID is 112-283-135 is the meeting number. That sounds fine, that sounds... Oh, someone else is coming, hold on, wait. Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah. My thing, my battery's low, let me plug my phone in. I got it.
Awesome.
I can see the screen as well, but you know, I, I can-
You would rather be on your computer, or?
Yeah, I can do it on my computer probably, but I can get the sound from the phone, is that okay?
Oh, good, yes, 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 that makes wonderful sense.
Okay, finally, we got it to work.
Yay, I have no idea why it's not working, honestly, let me unpause my screen. No, Bupi, it's not mine, it's, I actually don't know what's, what the issue is, it's the sound on the original link, but it's fine, we found a bendy.
Can you hear me there?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, because I have my phone a little distance away from me, so, just, just as long as you can hear me.
Sure, absolutely, so what I was saying earlier before, I couldn't tell if you could hear me or not, because I also couldn't hear you on that other connection, so domains one and three are gonna have the highest percentage of test questions from, so becoming very fluent and very competent in those particular competencies in those domains, within those domains, one and three, going to be really useful, so that is going to be competency one, which is designing instruction and assessment. And how many times have you taken it, Guadalupe, if you don't mind me asking?
It's four times already.
Okay, and what has been your sense of the exam? They've been mostly scenarios. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, good. The way that this test is created is to be, you know, pretty tricky, but there are things to keep in mind when you're reading the test questions, when you're going through the answer choices, when you're looking at the verbs and the answer choice to keep in mind before you make your final answer. What was this for the last time you tested?
This last time that I tested was July 24th, and it was a 236.
Oh, 236?
Yes.
Oh, so close.
The other times has been the 220s.
Oh, it's so, so close, so what do you think has been the biggest issue, or what do you feel where you possibly have struggled? Because I haven't seen any of your scores before, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what, you know, what has given you difficulties in the past?
Well, the thing is, you know, like y'all give me some things to study, like study.com, and, and then it was, it's learning, and then 240 tutoring. I studied all of those, but then when I take the test, there, there are a couple of questions that are not in the what you study.
Right, and so-
That's been my focus.
Right, there's never going to be, like, they will never ask you a question, what else strategy, or something, you know, something so blatant and sort of like the first level of questioning. What they're going to do is they're gonna give you a scenario, a teaching scenario, a pedagogical scenario, and they'll layer it with special populations, with possibly special needs, special teaching strategies, and you have to be so careful to read through the scenarios and the questions to come up with the right answer, and you've been doing really well because 236 is almost there, just, just almost there, so what we're gonna do is take, take a look at some of the test questions that ETS gives us, because the state is super secretive. They don't tell anyone, they don't release any exams, any, you know, exams from the past so that you could prepare in like a real and meaningful way, they keep all of that under wraps, and really the only test that they released is the one that they have online and the study manual, so what I like to do is to discuss some of the things that I want for you to think of while you're taking the exam, while you're reading the scenarios, to write down keywords, key terms in the answer, excuse me, in the question. That one, when you're at the questions and you're at the answer choices, you can sort of decipher which is the best, a bit better, and so we'll go through some of those and I'll ask you like, what are the keywords that you're seeing, what are asking, what are the special populations, so this is kind of backwards, you can't see, but what is the question asking is the most important thing for us to look at, to really dissect. Because this exam is, if not anything else, a reading comprehension exam, it just really is, you have to be so careful with what the words that they use, are they all inclusive? Are they excluding a special portion of students? Or any portion of students, so one of the first things is what keywords are are there in the scenario that you're able to, because that's important, are they give you clues? And they're trying to be tricky, and they're trying to trick you, so keep that in mind. Do any of the answer choices favor one option or one group over the other, if it does, or if it excludes any sort of certain portion of students, that's never gonna be the answer, it's gonna be inclusive, it's going to be, Zara, it's going to be the best case scenario. It's never going to be what you have actually experienced on your campus in real life, it's gonna be utopia ISD, utopia high school, or utopia middle school, or utopia elementary, so best case scenario, you don't have any sort of limitations with funding for technology or anything like that. Another really important thing to remember when you're taking the exam is not to bring anything outside from what you've experienced into the test itself, just go with the information in the scenario, only with what they're giving you in the scenario. Because a lot of times we assume things based on our own experiences, we might have had a very similar experience, but the way we actually have to behave in the real world might be a little bit different than the best answer scenario within the exam, because this exam is under the conditions of no sort of limitations, best case scenario, you have everything at your hands, so don't think about limitations that you've, if you've experienced in a classroom. So let's take a look at some of the answer choices, and right now I'm taking a look at the, the study guide from ETS.
Okay, I went, I wanna take a test today, a practice test, and I, I scored even lower, but my my weak domain was domain one, this last time I took the test. See, I missed like about eighteen-
Domain one, okay, so I'm moving this quickly, I'm sorry if that makes you dizzy, sometimes it makes me dizzy too, so domain one is right here. And have you gone through these domains and sort of like seen through each one, gone through each one of these to see in the competency, to see if you understand the, not understand, but you are familiar with the information in, in in these specific competencies, like understanding the developmental process and be able to apply that when you're making instruction, and this matters because let's say for instance a PE teacher, or music teacher, or even a science teacher, you have to know what's developmentally appropriate for the particular age group that you're teaching, and oftentimes the certification areas are over a large swath of grades, and so it's up to us to know where they are developmentally and how to better adjust the lesson to increase learning outcomes, learning outcomes in the classroom, so have you gone through these and just sort of read them and highlighted different things that you possibly are not as comfortable with?
No, I haven't gone through those, I've been going just through the, through the online studying.
Right, and, and those tools are good, they're, they're very good, but this is actually, these competencies, they come from the state. It's, it's what, it's the standards that the state gives us, and so these test questions are gonna come specifically from these, so the answer choices are gonna make sure that you're doing these things, the answer choice, for instance, let's say that they give you one on diversity, incompetency two, they may give you one, but the best answer choice might be where you're accepting and respecting students with diverse backgrounds and needs, that might be one of the best answer choices in the scenario that they give you, so understanding and knowing these is very important in order to be successful on, on the exam. Another important thing is knowing your ELL strategies and knowing what specific techniques and strategies to use in the classroom, I know that they've always, the state examining board has always been very heavy on English language learner questions, and also technology questions, how you're incorporating technology, whether or not you're making it accessible to all students, so it needs to be fair and equitable to everyone, and like I said, in, in the case of this exam, it is in, under the impression that it's this utopia ISD that has all sorts of funds to do everything that in theory we're supposed to be able to do for the students. So knowing the ELPS domain, very important for the for the exam, and there's no way of you knowing those unless you, unless you look them up, now, I think that the ELPS domain, there is review information on both its learning and study.com, where we go through the different levels of beginning, intermediate, advanced, advanced by ELL learners or English language learner speakers. There's different descriptors on their reading level, on their listening level, on their speaking level, and then also on their writing level, and so as educators, it's important for us to be able to identify their verbal cues, their reading cues, in order to identify where they need to be or how we need to adjust our lessons so that we can better suit the needs.
Yes, ma'am, and I've, I've taught training all three years on-
I know, but I'm telling you, it's just the questions, it's just carefully reading the questions and, and just like a a phrase at the end, or a can change the whole, whether the answer choice is correct or not, and many times there, there are two answer choices that are correct, but one is better than the other, because one is either more inclusive, or it's higher level thinking, or it specifically addresses a special population that was hidden in the information they gave you in the scenario, making it the better answer choice, so one answer choice is might be something that yes, you would definitely do in your class also, but the best primary thing would be the other, so let's take a look at some of those, that way we can see just where they make these little, little changes. But going through this document yourself and looking, reading over the domains and the competencies within those domains, those two main domains, together they make up, I think it's like sixty-seven percent, which is a really huge, that's a huge percentage of the exam, I mean, it's almost seventy percent, just with-
Okay, it froze up, so now you're back.
Excuse me? Oh, okay.
It had frozen up, but now I can hear you again.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so let's start with here we are, question one. Okay, which of the following strategies is most appropriate for assisting English language learners, ELLs, at the beginning level of proficiency with reading specific material, excuse me, reading content specific material? Now already, just, just knowing the ELPS, I, I have an answer in my, in my head, but let's take a look at the keywords. What is the question asking, of what population and what special descriptors or indicators will help me choose the right answer, so just Lupe, if you want to, tell me what sort of keywords stand out to you? And on the day of the exam, I'm a, I like to write and like, you know, box in my answer choice, so what I would do if I were taking a computer-based only exam is with the scratch material that they give me, I would write number one, and even if it's just a scenario, just, you know, write the, the main points in the scenario, it's a reading strategy that I use with my students when they're chunking the text to write off to the side, like what important things are you looking at? What is the question asking of you, what key descriptors do I need to keep in mind when I'm looking for the correct answer choice?
Okay, so some of the keywords that I see is strategies.
Yes, strategies.
Strategy, and then assisting?
Assisting, most appropriate is going to be keywords too, because when they give you that, when they tell you most appropriate, don't be tricked, they're telling you because there's another appropriate one in there, but there's one that is above that more appropriate. So there are two correct answer choices here, sort of, one is more appropriate than the other.
And of course the beginning level of proficiency?
Yes, beginning level proficiency, that's very important when you're thinking of ELPS strategies and the indicators, because it tells you where they are and how much assistance they might need, but there's another clue in there that is very important.
The reading content specific material?
The content specific material. Especially English language learners have difficulties with academic language, so if it's specific content related material and you're educator that is showing it for the first time, teaching it for the first time, you're going to want to provide the academic language that you're going to be using, that they probably have never seen before, before instruction, you're gonna provide that, that, give them that language to use. So let's take a look at the, the answer choice, so for me, content specific really rang out to me, because that means that within the content area, they're probably gonna be less familiar with this, and so I'm gonna have, since they're beginner level, I'm gonna be giving them this information beforehand as an introductory sort of thing. So it just so happens that everything I just said is also an answer choice, but let's take a look at the other ones, so- A is providing instruction on text-based academic vocabulary prior to reading. Now, this is a strategy that is an Elps strategy and it decreases the frustration because they are not going to know specific academic content-related language. Maybe they'll know some authentic sort of informal language that they might be able to get away with their peers, but as far as content-specific related language, we're going to have to give that instruction beforehand so that we decrease the frustration that's already going to be there with the acquisition of a new language. The next one is requiring students to develop outlines of the text that they're reading in English while they're reading it. What do you think about that answer choice?
Okay, I think since this, see, things like this is what throws me off because it says requiring students to develop outlines. Okay, if they're beginner ELLs, I think that developing outlines is too advanced for them?
You're right, that's too advanced. So the beginner, the beginning portion of that level of proficiency crosses out B. B is not an option because an outline on their own would be virtually impossible at a beginning level of proficiency. And it would be highly frustrating even to ask that of them. I mean, they would feel discouraged and intimidated and it would not be a good exercise for them. So C says, having students read content material aloud in groups with other ELLs. What do you think about that answer choice?
Well, if, it depends whether they're beginners or if there's a variety of different, different levels, okay, for the ELL.
They're not telling you, so we just know, they might all be beginners.
Okay, but see, I mean, that's what I look at, you know, when I look, so seven students read content, and then I start thinking, well, you know, what, what, what are the levels that are in there or, you know, are there beginners? You know, and I, I eliminate that one.
Yeah, I would eliminate that one as well. Because even if the other students are advanced, let's say they're advanced, intermediate, advanced high, there's maybe advanced high, which is closest to a native English speaker.
Right.
They're, they're not going to benefit from reading aloud together like that.
And then you might be putting them in the spot also because
Exactly.
They're, they're afraid that they might not pronounce the words right correctly or.
Yes, so that would be not the most appropriate. Remember, we're looking for the most appropriate.
Right.
So providing students with parallel texts in English and their native language.
I think this is the correct one because usually at the very beginning of, or even at the intermediate, they need their native language or they need for, for the teacher to give them some like, let's say a picture and then the word, a picture of, let's say a ball, whatever you, ball in English and then pelota in Spanish.
Right, and so let me say that I also thought that that was a viable answer choice, but remember, they're giving you two and they want to know which is the most, the most appropriate, based on all those key words we talked about. The key words are most appropriate, beginning level, content specific. Those three things need to be satisfied in order for the answer choice to be correct. We already know, or we can guess that because it said most appropriate, that they gave us two really good ones that we might use, both we might use in our classroom. I know I would certainly use the ones that you have chosen, both A and D. One is better than the other specifically for content-specific material.
Okay, well, I know that learning the academic vocabulary is very important at the beginning stages.
Yeah.
That's what that, now that you based it that way, I think that A would probably be the, the most appropriate because what I've studied, you know, on the, what y'all have given me, it's very important for them to work on the vocabulary.
Yes, to build that, that vocabulary. So I think, and so when you're answering these, if you, if you can figure out or identify those key words, layers of like the ELO, beginning level, content-specific material, and then the answer choice satisfies all of those and you can be fairly confident that that is the correct answer. And actually, I think this is the correct answer. So A, A is the correct answer because, I mean, with this for a second, providing instruction on content-specific vocabulary has been proven to help both ELL and native speakers acquire new vocabulary and comprehend content-related instruction. So because of that content-specific descriptor that they gave you and just, if they gave you a descriptor, Lupe, say, why are they telling me this? It has to be important in some way, if they're giving me extra descriptors. That might be an extra clue to help you weed out one of the answers. And more often than not, they're going to give you two really good answers. You're right, in my classroom, when I taught Romeo and Juliet and I had ELLs that were in high school that were at, you know, beginning, all levels, intermediate, just, you know, all levels across the listening, speaking, reading and writing spectrum. And having the document that had the, their native language, the Spanish and the English was so helpful. But I still had to teach them that academic vocabulary that we were going to use to discuss. I had to just give that to them. And you're right, I had to try as best I could to give it to them with visuals so that they could, you know, visually comprehend it or make some sort of connection in that way. I'm sorry, one moment. Okay, so how do you feel about that one?
Yeah, well, that, you know, well, vocabulary is a key word for me. That, that would have, but the one, you know, they, there's another one, like you say, usually there's always two answers.
Yes.
I'm going back and forth vocabulary and native language, you know, because I know that, that at the beginning stages, there's some, I guess some scenarios in the study.com that tell you, you know, that I guess that you draw the picture or whatever and then you give them the, also in their native language to help them.
Right.
So those are the things that throw me off, but I know that the vocabulary is the main, the main part.
Yes.
What throws me off on that, it's, you know, that I, what I think is like the elementary, okay, at the very beginning, they go by picture and word, right? So that's what throws me off because I think vocabulary is like at the intermediate level.
Right, but so the vocabulary that you give them might be very babyish and with, with pictures. And so it's not just going to be the definition and that's it. You're going to give them instruction on that academic vocabulary and that's going to also include how it's used, it might include their own native language in it as well. For me, it included the, the frère model and there was a picture, we used it in a sentence, we tried to draw the synonyms or for it. So we did several things within, within the vocabulary itself, not just the, the words, but
I understand now.
Another thing to, to remember is to take a look at, and this is important, to look at the verbs that they're using to describe in your answer choice. So providing, requiring, that's really not, I mean, having, you're going to be providing, you're going to be enabling, you're going to be fulfilling, so look at the action verbs that are in the answer choices. Are they positive? Are they negative? Are they all-inclusive? Because they always want you to be all-inclusive. You're supposed to be helping the most amount of students, helping the parents stay involved, like keeping that connection, so that, all-inclusive. So remember that when you're, when you're reading the answer choices, to take a look at those action verbs. Because that will also help you eliminate answer choices. At the very least to the two that are the best choices. So the next one, a school district has implemented a BYOD, bring your own device policy, which allows students to use their internet-capable personal devices in class with teacher permission. Teachers are planning to have students use the devices for end of chapter quizzes. Which of the following is the most appropriate way for teachers to ensure that the students who do not own personal devices can participate? So what, what key information do we have here? What is the question asking of us? What key words? Do any of the options, answer choices favor one group or the, over the other? Do they exclude anybody? And what should always happen, like the, ask yourself, what should always happen in a classroom? Kids should always have the same.
A chance to, if they don't have personal devices, to find other ways, like a laptop or, or go to the computer lab and.
Exactly.
There, something like that.
And remember with this exam, you're under the impression that there are so, no, no sort of limitation. So there would be a whole cowl of iPads or laptops waiting for your students to use in this utopia ISD. So let's take a look at the answer choices. Requiring, there's that word again, all students to answer the quizzes on paper and to submit the paper. Now, what do you think about this answer choice?
Well, because the thing is that they implemented a bring your own device policy and what she's planning is to ask the students to use devices at the end of chapter quizzes.
Yes.
Now, if she's going to require all the students to answer the quizzes on paper, to submit it on paper, then it's not going to, her planning is going to go, is not going to work because she planned something else and she wants to do it a certain way.
Exactly, so it actually wouldn't meet the needs or the goals of the lesson that she had intended because that was going to be the use of online. And, and the districts and the state want for you to, to include that technology and that media savvy into the lesson. So for me, knowing that the original plan was for everyone to take the quiz online, it would not be the most appropriate thing for her to allow people to test on paper. Also look at those action verbs at the beginning of each of the answer choices. You have requiring, providing, asking and telling, which is the best just out of those?
I think B, providing longer devices from school inventories that are capable of accessing the quizzes.
Yes, and that's, and that is, that is actually the right answer. So you can't tell the students that they have to borrow from someone or rent a device. First of all, like that, we can't even demand that they borrow, that they buy, purchase a book, you know, if it's in the lesson and we are going to measure them in some way in their education, that we have to provide them with a copy or some sort of source to complete the assignment, the way that it was intended.
Or there's, there's other ways also, I mean, it can be set up in the library computers and if it's just a certain amount of students, you can have, we'll take it over to the library as well.
Yes. So let's take a look at that one. So B is correct because it provides each student with the opportunity to participate in the activity using basic device, fulfilling the original purpose of the activity, the informal assessment and the student engagement. So you were correct because some of the answer choices did not fulfill the original purpose of the lesson that the teacher provided or had planned. So a social studies teacher is planning a unit for National Hispanic Heritage Month. With, which of the following activities will best engage kinesthetic learners? So what are the key words? What is the question asking of us? Again, take a look at the action verbs and see sort of which one you think is best. So we want kinesthetic learners, best engaging them in which of the following activities?
Okay, are you talking about the answer choices or you look about the question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I was just picking apart the key words.
Oh, the question? Yes?
Yes, the question, it's correct.
Okay, planning, okay, is probably, planning a unit for the Heritage Month. Activities will best engage, and then kinesthetic learners. Okay, let's see, observing.
So we're looking for engagement. Which of these is going to best engage learners that need to move in some sort of way or that learn better through movement?
Okay, engaging would probably be like hands-on or because observing performers, models dance from different regions, that's not, they're just going to be observing.
Watching.
Yeah, creating masks like those traditionally used in the Ponce Carnival in Puerto Rico. Okay, that could be the correct answer. Identifying important geographical features on the map of Argentina. Well, that could be, but it's not what it's asking for Hispanic Heritage Month, so. Well.
Plus, would it engage them though?
Yeah, I guess they could engage them to try to identify, to get their higher thinking order skills going. Comparing the monetary system of Colombia to that of the United States. Okay, but they're comparing there. So usually the, what I, what I would do, what I would select here, because that word, creating, is sticking out to me. And then, you know, like when the questions come up, you know, this is, this is probably, but my problem is because creating and identifying, I usually go like with sensor for National Hispanic Heritage Month. And it says activities. Okay, I would eliminate identifying geographic features because it's not, it's not having to do with an activity.
Right.
They're creating the masks, that is like a, an activity that will engage them to, that will engage the kinesthetic learners, so I think I would go with B.
Yes, so I, I think I'll go with B too. I like your process of elimination there, let's take a look at it. B is correct because it allows the students to work with their hands, which is appealing for a kinesthetic learner. And it also integrates the arts, and the other one you said was C, right? C is incorrect because it incorporates other subjects in social studies lesson, but does not involve hands-on learning.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I, I think I eliminated it because it didn't.
Yeah, you did, you did, you did well, exactly. So, so really identifying those key terms, looking at the action verbs and knowing that there are two really good answers, but one is better than the other based on those key words that they gave you. I think it'll help you. And, and don't feel bad about yourself, this is a challenging exam, lots of people have difficulty with it because they do make it so tricky, because there are two good answer choices where you possibly could use both in your classroom in the lesson, just based on what they say, one is slightly better than the other. Which of the following teacher actions will best promote parents as partners in their child's education? So what are your key words? What are we supposed to be looking for in this, for your answer choice?
Teacher's actions and then promote. And then partners in child's education.
Yes. So the first is having the parents sign their children's progression report so they can monitor the child's learning. Contacting parents with good news about their child as needed. Sending home with each child a copy of the school's policy on family involvement. And encouraging parents to have high aspirations for their. and encouraging parents to have high aspirations for their child's learning.
Okay, um.
So which would best promote? Just by the way that they're framing it, you already know there's a couple of things on there that possibly do promote parents as partners in their child's education, keeping them informed. Um, but there's one better than the other, and this one is super extra tricky. In fact, I don't like the way that this one was um formulated. I thought, I think it was made to be extra tricky. Um, I'm going to grab some water very, really quickly. You look these answer choices over and, and let me know which one you think is best and then we'll go through the thought process right now. And what we're doing is what we ask the students to do. This is metacognition. We're thinking about our thinking. So going through and kind of siphoning through the answer choices and asking ourselves, why is this one right? What would, why did we think this one was right? Why do we think this one is wrong? And kind of like going through the different things. One moment, you'll, you look for the answer choices.
Okay.
Okay, back.
Okay, uh. I would eliminate uh A because uh when you have them sign the progress reports uh you don't know if they're gonna get the progress report.
Remember, we can't assume. We're just assuming everybody's perfect and they're gonna get it.
Okay. Okay, having the parents sign their child progress report so they can monitor the child's learning. Okay, monitoring, that's, that's uh probably a keyword.
Mm-hmm.
Contacting parents with good news about their child as needed. Okay, that could be another one.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this one, sending home with each child a copy of the school's policy on family involvement. Um, I think this one is too thorough. And uh, I think they get a handbook and uh at the beginning and.
I don't think it would promote any sort of partnership between if, if uh you just sent home the.
Okay, and encouraging parents to have high aspirations for their child's learning. Yes, that's uh, I would eliminate that one because I mean, having highs aspirations, you know, like some of the parents are, you know, are Spanish-speaking parents and
Mm-hmm.
they don't know exactly and all they wish is for the best for their children, but that's not, I don't think that's promoting parents as partners.
Yeah.
Okay, so now that uh, cause I was eliminating A. But now since uh you gave me that little clue, I think A would be the answer because uh uh, okay, the way I was thinking here, having the parents sign the child's progress report. Okay, what I start thinking right away is, no, not everybody's gonna get it. But you say that this is a perfect world. Okay, I'm starting to understand that now. Okay, having the parents sign the child progress report uh and they can monitor what the child is doing and what the child is learning. The other one, B is good, but I mean, just you contacting them about good news about their child as needed, uh that doesn't mean that you're gonna have contact all the time or that's not even gonna uh uh give them the chance to know exactly what the child is doing.
Right, either high or low or medium or whatever the case. And also, that as needed part makes that answer choice be wrong. Because contacting parents with good news about their child the as needed for whatever reason makes that one wrong. Let me show you how. Uh, you're correct that A is, is the better option because um they're monitoring the progress over time and keeping up that, you know, constant um awareness of the child's learning. And let me see, B is incorrect because sending home good news reports should be an ongoing action, not one that occurs as needed.
Okay, so as needed is uh, yeah.
So sometimes they throw in words or phrases into the answer choices that makes them null and void.
Okay, uh, let me ask you, maybe my thinking is uh, maybe that's what throws me off sometimes because like, like I start thinking, like I told you, you know, going back to uh to A. You know, I start thinking, well, I mean, the way you see the students in the classroom. Okay, this is what might be throwing me off, that not all parents are gonna get the progress reports.
Right, that's correct. I mean, even in my, if I were to go and answer these off of my experience in the classroom on progress report day, there were so many left underneath the desks that they didn't even, I hung them out and they were in my classroom. Can you hear?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you now.
So, um, so yes, you're right. In the real world, that, we have to do more than just send home the progress report to keep them abreast of the, of the, and also you, you have to do all of them, but remember the act, the question asked us the best promote. So there was another one that can also promote parents as partners, but the best way to promote in their education is to make them monitors of their child education. So they know where they are, how they're doing, and they can monitor it. And also, obviously, you would call with good news when it's good news all the time um as much as possible. But yes, only what, only with what's there, only with what's in the answer choices, only with what they give you in this scenario. Which of the following is the most appropriate first step to take if a teacher is concerned that a student is suffering for abuse? Now, this one, there's no if, ands, or buts about it. There's always one answer choice for this.
Yeah, I know, uh, my answer choice on this one and uh is a report of suspicions to CPS.
Absolutely. So it, you will be, I mean, it's the law and you have a certain amount of hours to do it. You'll be held liable if any sort of, anything happens to the kid, and even if it doesn't, um it, it's our duty to go not to a principal or supervisor or anything, but directly to CPS before. And then if you wanna tell other people later, like that you're administrative, that's fine. Um, so good. Okay, this one is an example of what we're seeing more and more often, yes? Fifteen and four lots. Okay, so um, the last time you took it was in July?
Yeah, July twenty-fourth.
Okay, and so the questions, are there, are there, were there more scenario questions or single level questions?
Uh, no, I think there were more scenario questions than.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, a- and obviously the scenarios are only more challenging because they give you more stuff to like have to keep in mind when you're looking through those answer choices. More keywords, more clues within the scenario itself and everything is virtually imported. That's here. So let's take a look at this one. A middle school teacher is preparing a class for a field trip to state legislature and planning the unit to help the students understand the role of the legislature in the state government. So this is the unit. The first objective is research. Students will work in a small group, in small groups to gather information about legislative issue and publish that information in report form. Objective two is analysis. Students will form an opinion on their issue and demonstrate an awareness of the significance of the issue. Next, uh, objective three, propose a bill. Students are gonna work in small groups to write a draft of a proposed bill about the issue. Objective four, they'll do discussions. The students will discuss the issue with peers, attempting to persuade peers to adopt a certain position on the issue. And objective five is the mock legislative session where students will demonstrate an understanding of the legislative process and participate in a mock legislative session. So this is actually a really cool unit. I like it. Let's take a look at what sort of questions they can ask us based on this unit. Which of the following is the primary concern for the teacher to address when evaluating the objective two of the unit? So what is the question asking of us and what are the key words before we go back and we, objective two is analysis?
Okay, first of all, it's a primary concern.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to address uh when evaluating object two of the unit, objective two, I'm sorry, of the unit.
Yes, so the teacher is evaluating her own objectives. She's, I guess, looking at it to see if it's a good objective, which is what everybody should really do with their lesson plan. Say, is this measurable? Am I measuring what I'm saying I'm measuring? Am I looking at what I'm, is it's a good um objective? Is this a measurable goal? Is this a measurable outcome? So what is the primary concern for the teacher to address when evaluating objective two of the unit? So objective two is analysis. And here she asks, this is the objective. That students will form an opinion of their issue and demonstrate an awareness of the significance of the issue. So she should be most concerned with this, that the desired outcome is not directly measurable or that the student action is not appropriate for the group activity or that the intended action does not meet the goal of the project or that the proposed objective does not require higher level thinking. So she's, she is critiquing her own objective. What should she be primarily concerned about when looking at it? Like what jumps out at you with that objective?
Okay, um, you see, like questions like this, it says, uh, students will form an opinion on their demonstrate an awareness of the significant, of the significance of the issue. Now, since she's saying that they're gonna be working in small groups, okay, discussion came to mind. Okay, but I see that objective four is where the discussions occur.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but the, the desired outcome is not to be measurable.
So they.
That could be it because uh she didn't assess uh how uh, I guess there's not a assessment done uh for it to be measurable. Uh, the student action is not appropriate for a group activity. I mean, that's part of the work that they're gonna have to do.
Yeah, it's appropriate.
I would eliminate that one.
Mm-hmm.
Then the action does not meet the goal of the project. Uh I mean, while they're not even close to what, what they're supposed to do there is just analyzing at the present time. So I would eliminate that one. The proposed objective does not require higher level thinking. Okay, that could be the other one as well.
But analysis is higher level thinking. That, just that word in itself is at the higher level. Remember, uh, Bloom's taxonomy is the.
Yes.
It, it.
It's the cognitive thinking and um.
Right, and so knowledge, you have knowledge, comprehension, application, analysis, synthesis and evaluation. So it's actually the, based on what she has it labeled, which is what we have, it is higher, higher order because of the analysis, that tag.
I see it now. Okay. Yeah, but you know, you started thinking about this, you know, like uh, you know, since you have, like, they tell you to do assessments and all that and then just analyzes, uh, students will form an opinion on their issue and demonstrate an awareness uh of the significance of the issue. Well, I started thinking, well, you know, uh how could, how could I assess that to see if it would work or not? And then, you know, I would start thinking that maybe A would be the answer because the desired outcome is not directly measurable because it hasn't been assessed.
I, I would say yes. It's a very different, difficult to measure an opinion and whether somebody gets the significance of something or not. That's.
But the thing is that I didn't, you see, I didn't pick up the, require the higher level thinking and analysis. Okay, so it's uh, uh, one of the things that probably threw me off as well. Okay, because when I uh, when I saw analysis, uh, I didn't, I didn't think of the Bloom's taxonomy and I didn't think of the, the higher level thinking, so that's probably things that I'm gonna have to work on.
Right, because remember, in the, remember, in the scenario, they did their research beforehand.
Right.
Um, to gather information, um, and they have to form an opinion, I'm assuming after they have gathered the information. So they're making an informed opinion. Um, it's just an opinion. And like I said, it's very difficult to measure if someone gets the significance of something or not, or an opinion. Um, which one is this? Oh, it's six. So A is correct because there is no specific method given. See, for students to demonstrate awareness, there's not like a measurement, as you said, there's not an assessment to assess whether the significance was ascertained. So there is no way for the teacher to measure or assess student mastery of that objective. And we should always be able to assess their mastery in some way or another with some sort of assessment so that we can know if what we're doing is actually working, if there's growth, if the learning outcomes are being um met.
Okay, so I was right then.
Yes, you were right.
Okay, no, okay, okay, because.
Okay, so D is correct because forming an opinion.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, I was just reading why D is, uh, it's because it, the analysis is higher level thinking and it, the issue requires students to analyze and evaluate information, both of which are higher level thinking skills.
Oh, okay. Okay. Starting to get the picture now.
Yeah, they are gonna be tricky. You have to keep your eyes open and know that there are two really good choices. And when you've got it down to those two, scrutinize them and say, which of them best addresses all of the key words that I identified, all of the descriptors there in the scenario and in the question itself, so, so that you can choose the best answer. Let's see what. Okay, which of the following will best ensure the proper classroom climate for objective five? So what are the key words um that we should remember when we go back to look at objective five?
Okay, uh, ensure the proper classroom climate?
Mm-hmm, classroom climate. So what does that mean? What does the climate have to, like, what is that? Like the atmosphere?
Climate, like. Does that have to do like with temperature and all that of the room, the?
Sort of. It means the atmosphere of the classroom, like, and that everybody's safe. Everybody's respectful, there's no bullying. It's, it's a respectful learning environment where nobody feels uncomfortable and there's sort of like guidelines and order where people feel good and safe. Climate in the metaphoric sense. So for objective five, the, okay, the mock legislative session um is what objective five is. Students will participate, excuse me, will demonstrate an understanding of the legislative process and participate in a mock legislative session. So they're gonna do a mock legislative session and some of the, so discussing the importance of professional attire for the activity, having the students agree to ground rules for the activity, allowing students to rearrange the room to. Allowing students to rearrange the room to resemble a legislative chamber. And showing students a video of a famous debate that occurred in a legislative session. So we're looking for the one that will best ensure, that means guarantee, the proper classroom climate. And the proper classroom climate should always be safe, friendly, zero bullying. Everybody's just kumbaya and for objective five. And if you know anything about legislative sessions, sometimes they can get pretty heated during a debate, especially if the content is contentious. So during objective five, which would be the most important for the teacher to do in order to ensure that the classroom climate is the proper classroom climate?
Okay, I think that, you know, like, at the very beginning, they, they stress for the teachers to set their rules and you know, even have the students help out in uh, in setting up the rules at the very beginning of the school year. So discussing the importance of professional attire, I mean, that's, uh, I would eliminate that one right away.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rearranging the, the room to resemble a legislator chamber. Okay, you can rearrange the room, but I mean, that doesn't exactly provide good classroom climate, or it doesn't tell you anything about uh, classroom climate.
Right.
If you're in a video, I mean, they're just gonna look at the video, they're just gonna observe. I mean, but that doesn't, uh, let them know what uh, should go on. So I think that the, having the students agree to ground rules for the activity, that would have to be it because of setting the ground rules are, uh, that would give them a, a great classroom climate. Because everybody would have to follow those ground rules.
Absolutely, I, my, your thinking is perfect. And so, yes, um, you would always wanna encourage teachers to include their students when, when they're setting up those classroom rules at the beginning of the year. But also, if you're gonna do an activity that you've never done before, and if it's a big group debate type thing, obviously, you're gonna wanna set the expectations. You're gonna discuss with the students what the ground rules are for the rules of engagement so that we can maintain and ensure that proper classroom climate. And you're correct, rearranging the room, although it would be cool and better for people to like, for the activity, for people to talk to each other, it's not gonna ensure that they have a proper climate. It's not gonna ensure that they're not yelling obscenities to each other. I mean, not that they're gonna do that, but you know, that, that doesn't help maintain or ensure the proper classroom climate. It might facilitate better conversation um, or more conversation, or a more realistic conversation, but that's not what the question's asking. So option B is correct because allowing the students to set the guidelines for the activity will help create a respectful atmosphere. And so that's one of the things, when you're reading through all the answer choices, what should always happen in the classroom? In utopia land, in best case scenario, everybody's respectful, they feel safe, there's no bullying. The guidelines are set before, the students understand their expectations so that they're able to meet them. The respectful atmosphere in which all students can freely and safely participate. So always student safety is at the safety and um, is at the top of our, our needs list or our want list in the classroom. The other one that we said that was maybe, oh, the room arrangement. Option C is incorrect because although room arrangement can facilitate, just like I said, it's gonna make it, yes, they'll be, oh, in the debate, but that doesn't mean that they're going to, it's gonna be this great climate. Um, the fostering of a climate of respect and support with each other is going to happen through setting up of guidelines and practice. So good, that was very good. Which of the following statements is the best way to express the desired objective outcome of objective three in the lesson plan? So what are our key words here? What is the question asking of us?
Since which of the following statements is the best way to express the desired outcome in the lesson plan?
Yes, objective three, okay. Let's take a look at objective three. So objective three is to propose a bill, that's the title, but this is the actual objective. Students will work in small groups to draft, to write a draft of a proposed bill about their issue. So they're gonna work in small groups to write a draft of a proposed bill about their issue. Now, it's asking for product, right? Or the outcome, what is the desired outcome of having the students write this draft? So students will be able to outline the process involved in drafting the legislation for consideration. Is that the best way to describe the desired outcome? Or that for the students, that students will understand the collaborative part of the legislative process? Students will appreciate the complexities of the legislative process? Or students will be able to draft a piece of legislation to present for debate? So the desired outcome.
Can you go back up to the top so I can?
Yes, of course. So the desired outcome, your, your product should be, the student outcome should be what from this? Students will work in small groups to write a draft of a proposed bill about their issue. What is the main purpose or product that they should have at the end of this objective?
Okay, the thing for them is to write a draft of what, about an issue. Okay, by working in small groups. Okay, uh.
So which is the most important or best describes the learning outcome? Student outcome.
Them working in small groups or?
That, well, the, the objective is for them to work in small groups, but in order to do what?
To write a draft of a proposed bill?
To write a draft, that's the big part of it, that's the important portion of the objective. Um, so what would be the best reflection of an outcome for that particular one? An outline of the process? Understanding of the collaborative part of legislative process? Now, many of these things might be an outcome. There's not just one outcome, but which is the best way to describe the teacher's desired outcome based on the objective that she wrote?
Okay. Drafting legislation for consideration. I think that's too too advanced. Because uh, you could.
One moment.
Okay.
Hi, I'm giving a session. Hi, did you mean to call me?
No, I was trying, I was talking to your dad.
You were trying to talk to my dad?
I was talking to your dad, I don't know what happened, sorry.
Oh, it's okay, I'm giving a session, enjoy your time.
Alright, bye.
Bye. Sorry, who's my boss?
Uh, okay, uh, outlining the process involved in drafting legislation for consideration? Okay. Again.
I, I, I am just very popular today. Okay, so what were you saying? Oh, she was, I'm just gonna, I don't know why he's trying to get over me. So students will be able to draft a piece of legislation, what were you saying about that one?
Okay, uh, to me, uh, you don't know if they learned about drafting legislation?
Well, you don't know, go with what the objective says. Remember, the objective says work in a small group in order to produce a draft of legislation.
Okay, uh, students will understand the collaborative part, okay, no. Students will appreciate, okay, no, it's not asking for appreciation. Okay, since they're uh, wanting to write for a proposed bill, I think that D would be it because students will be able to draft a piece of legislation. Okay, that means that they're working together to come up with a draft for a proposed bill that they wanna present for that debate. I think that, I think that would be the answer.
Yes, based on the question and what they say, they will also understand the collaborative part of the legislative process. But that's not the best way to describe the desired effect. So D, because the statement clearly explains that the outcome that, that the teacher expects by stating that the student should be able to produce, um, where is it?
Produce to show that they have met the objective.
Yes, which is the draft.
Yes.
And the other one that we said.
Was, was it C? No.
Let me see. Yes, because it does not provide students with a concrete method of demonstrating their appreciation or understanding. So they most likely will be able to judge whether they met that goal or not. So we wouldn't be able to ascertain if they understood the importance of collaboration, I guess. I mean, you could, but you asked them a open-ended response of some sort. But there, remember, we're only going with what's in the text, the only with the information they give us.
Right.
Which of the following questions is best designed to elicit student responses that demonstrate mastery of both components of objective four? Okay, so let's take a look at what the question's asking of us and any key words that we can identify will help us eliminate some of the bad sort of choices.
Okay, which are the following questions, okay, questions? Okay, best design? Elicit student responses that demonstrate mastery of both components?
So there's two components to objective four, they're telling us there are. Let's go back to the objective four and take a look at what it says. This was in, is titled discussions. And so the students will discuss the issue with their peers, attempting to persuade peers to adopt a certain position on the issue. So again, they're working in groups, they're discussing the issue with peers, and they're attempting to persuade one another on their position on their, on their issue. So we need one that has them working together persuading, right? Because there's two objectives, working in groups together and persuading. The answer choice must do both things. Let's take a look at which one, which question elicits the best response of those two objectives?
The picture I get here is like jury duty.
That way.
That's a, like jury duty?
Yes.
Picture that I get, that you have to discuss and then come up with a, uh, with whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
So let me see. Best, best question is best elicit student responses that demonstrate mastery of both components of objective four. What's the meaning of objective or your bill? Why should I vote for your bill? If that one has a little bit of persuasion. The other one, what is the main objective of the bill? It's just asking for the main objective, but it's not persuading.
Yeah, it's not gonna elicit any sort of excellent response for persuasion.
Where did you find the information you used to draft your bill? Where did you find it? Okay, because this, this could be because the, uh, what they're doing is they're discussing the uh, the information that was found to use. They're using the information that was found to draft your bill, so that one can easily persuade the other students to, to go one way or the other. And who else supports this bill? Okay, who else supports this bill is just asking, is probably just doing one of the objective but not doing both of the objectives.
Right.
So I would, I would say that C would be the correct answer.
Okay, well, let's take a look, because you said B maybe, and then where did that one go? Why not B and why C? Which one best persuade? Which one will best be, because the persuasion part is the most important part of the two object components of objective four. But, um, which will elicit student responses that demonstrate mastery of both components? Their, their ability to discuss slash persuade of those two that you had originally brought it down to?
Okay, the way I was seeing, why should I vote for your bill? Okay, I was only thinking that it was only.
So if I asked you, why should I vote for your bill? You might say, well, because my bill's gonna do blah, blah, blah. And then I would have to back it up with all of my research and my and my, um, my concrete evidence, I suppose, um, in order to get you to come to my side of thinking or to come to, you know, view my position like I do. Would, where would you, where did you find the information you used to draft your bill elicit the same sort of responses from, why should I vote for your bill?
Well, that one, where did you find the information you used to draft your bill? Okay, what I thought on that one was, okay, he, uh, they found, uh, he's gonna let him see where, what the information that he got to use to draft this bill. But I could also persuade him to think of their, you know, it's, it's enough to, for them to choose either or.
Which one is best, which one is best designed? Which one is best designed to elicit student responses that demonstrate mastery of both components of the objective four? Let's go back up to objective four to see what they say. Discuss the issue with peers and attempting to persuade peers to adopt a certain position.
Okay, so it would have to probably be, let's see, where is it? It would have to probably be, uh, B because uh, he's gonna try to persuade him to vote for the bill and he's gonna give him the information why they should vote for that bill.
Yes, that why, that why is important. Um, let's take a look. Where are we at? Oh, here he is. B is correct because the question requires students to provide the information about the bill as well as demonstrating persuasive skills by constructing the argument to convince the audience. Um, let me see. C is incorrect because simply listing the sources does not effectively persuade the audience to support the bill.
Okay, and I was thinking there that it could persuade them to change their mind, uh, listing the sources.
Well, maybe, um, but the best, I, if you, if you get to the second layer of it, maybe we will go to the sources and use that, kind of like, after the person gave us the, why should we vote for you? You might call it, well, what you just said, I need to see your sources. That might be like a second step to it, which is why the answer is like a not terrible answer. But the best answer would be answer B.
Okay. Okay, I see it.
Okay, let's see. A teacher plans to use an online discussion board on which students will respond to open-ended questions about the novel they are studying. Parents have already given permission, permission for students to post online. Which of the following is the next step this teacher should take? Um, so they're gonna do online discussion, which means they can talk to each other about a novel. And parents have given the permission, what's the next step that they need to take? Assigning a certain time of day for the students to contribute to the discussion sections. Modeling the types of communication the students should use. Securing permission of the board from the school technology coordinator and assessing the computer literacy skills of students. Now, again, take a look at the verb, the action verbs also of the, um, of the question.
Okay, yeah, uh, discussion board with students will respond to opening about the novel they are studying. Parents have already given permission for the students to post online. Which of the following next that the teacher should take? Okay, assigning a certain time of day, I mean, uh, well, if you're gonna do uh, an online discussion board, I mean, it can be at any time, so let's.
Right.
Uh, eliminate it. Okay, modeling the types of communication, okay, the meeting, that's probably the way that I would go, but let me see the the other one, secure permission from the, for the board from the school technology, okay. Okay, that has nothing to do be if if it's available, uh there's no reason why the. School technology coordinator. Assessing the computer literacy skills of the students. Uh it's not asking you to assess a computer literacy skills. They it's a, they already should know how how to do. Uh the discussion board, but that's where the model can.
That's right, and so that actually is the best action globe, you have assigning, modeling, securing, assessing. You wanna you wanna go with the most positive um strategy or action. And that's gonna be to model the appropriate use for the students. Um especially if this is the first time that the students will be doing, again, setting the guidelines. Showing them what your expectations are, giving them models, giving them examples, so that they know what needs to be done. Noah, can you please help the dogs in? Thank you, love. Let's take a look at the rationale. B is correct because students need to understand the expectations from the online communication and what is acceptable to the teacher. Um and like you said, the other ones were kind of not, um they can be doing done at any time of the day. No specific time of the day is needs to be assigned. I think I actually skipped a question.
Oh, you?
Let me see, let me go back. Yes, I did. Number ten. Which of the following activities would be the most developmentally appropriate? For a first grade teacher to include in a unit on the life cycle of plants? So what is the question asking? What are the key words and what should we be looking for?
Okay, uh activities, most developmentally appropriate.
Developmentally appropriate is gonna be a big deal, first grade is a big deal.
First grade, yes, uh a unit on the life cycle of plants. This one, uh. I think I get it right, but the you you the answer that I usually go with is hands-on and seeing them grow. See them uh see the plant grow. So my, the answer I always choose on this one, I don't know if it's correct or not, but is planting a bean and observing the stages of growth.
Yes, absolutely, especially with the younger ones, hands-on is gonna be the way. So children in the first grade, they're concrete learners, and they best learn by doing experiments and observing real-life events. And then um, you know, documenting them, discussing them, that's how they work, that's how they learn best. So and and you might show them, I I would, if I were this first grade teacher, probably do several of those exercises. We might watch a video also about plants and draw the bean life cycle. But we would, the best, best one developmentally for first graders is going to be the the doing of the growing.
I think that one is basically also on uh what we've studied also, you know, on uh. I think on study dot com and and I think it came up on its learning as well.
Yes, I'm sure, I'm sure it did. They um. Hands-on for the elementary students are is going to be really important with those younger, those um developmentally younger ages. C, which of the following approaches is the most effective way? For a new teacher to improve implementation of a recently adopted curriculum? So what's the question asking of us and what are the key words?
Okay, approaches, uh effective. Improve implementation, adopted curriculum.
Alright, so it's a new curriculum, I guess for everyone. This is a new teacher and she wants to choose the most effective way. To improve the implementation of her lesson labs. So which is the the best way for a teacher to get? Feedback or to improve implementation um for this newly adopted curriculum? Focusing on keeping pace with the other teachers in the grade. Using supplementary materials from the educational supply store. Continuing to use the old curriculum while gradually introducing the new one. Or inviting another teacher to observe several lessons and give feedback.
Okay, uh the first one, talking about with the other teachers in the grade now, that one I would eliminate it right away.
Which one?
Uh A?
Yes.
Okay, B, using supplementary materials from the educational supply store. Well, that one is, I mean, could be, but.
Yes, but remember, this is in a best-case scenario where you would even have to get supplementary stuff.
Okay, okay, so that would be eliminated. Continuing to use the old curriculum while gradually introducing a new one. Okay, that would be one of them that I could probably choose. And inviting another teacher to observe several lessons. And give feedback. Okay, uh to me would either be C or D, but I think what I remember. Uh, because if you're inviting another teacher to observe several lessons, okay, it's not giving specifics. It's a new teacher, an experienced teacher, or how many years of, you know, or. You know, uh if the teacher has the experience to get the feedback, okay? So I think what I remember i- is to gradually use the old curriculum. And then gradually start introducing the new one. Because I think what you're doing there is you're going to uh. Prior, I guess you're using the prior knowledge of the students, because of the old, uh I don't know.
Let's take a look at the answer, I mean, the the question, um improve the implementation of. Would it improve the implementation of the new curriculum by continuing to do the old one?
I think so, I think it would, because gradually uh.
What if it's totally different? What if it's a totally new curriculum, completely different?
Oh, it's easier. Well, let's see. Which is the most effective way for a new teacher to improve? Implementation of a recently adopted. Uh, see. What I'm, what I'm seeing and what I remember, and I think the way I answered this one. Even though that the old curriculum might be a little bit different. But as as he's a, as she's doing that, uh starting off with the old curriculum. She can analyze and assess.
Yes.
And learn what the old curriculum is used to be. It would give her like different strategies to for her to use. Uh which will maybe help her.
Which one, C?
C, yeah, which would probably help her introduce the new one, because she's a. Uh she's comparing them both together.
Yes.
The learning new strategy. So I don't know, I would probably go with C.
Okay, well, let's take a look and then we'll discuss. Um, where are we at? D is the correct because peer observation is the most effective way for teachers to get an objective view of their teaching. And to make the needed changes in their teaching strategies. Which one you had said, okay, because the teacher should primarily be using curriculum adopted, uh district adopted curriculum. So actually, once the district changes curriculum, you'll actually get in trouble if you continue using the old one, they'll get super upset with you. I understand where you're coming from, but the old, the a new teacher, shh, Ziri. A new teacher wouldn't have familiarity with the old curriculum, they would both be new to them. Uh to to that new teacher. And so the most effective way would be to do the new curriculum. But have someone come in and observe you and to give you feedback to make those immediate changes. You're always going to want to. Especially if the question involves how you should work with your colleagues. Use them in a mentor type feedback type way, where you guys are using each other to become better, better educators together.
So do you think that part of my problem is that I overthink sometimes, like?
I definitely think that is part of your problem that you overthink, I definitely do.
Okay, because I see like, like I told you, here another teacher, and then I started thinking of uh. Okay, what if she's a new teacher, and what what is, what is she gonna observe? And what feedback is she gonna give if she's a new teacher as well? You know what I mean?
Oh, but the other one might not be a new teacher, it might be an old teacher, just as another teacher.
Right, but you know, another teacher, like like I said, that's what probably throws me off in the.
Right.
On the answer choices, because I'm not. Well, I'm not, I wasn't understanding the perfect world, but now I'm starting to see what they mean by the perfect world.
Yes.
It's just like the other question that we had, uh can't remember which one it was.
It was the one about the BYOD, the bring your own device.
Oh, yeah, there you go, yeah, okay, okay, I'm starting to see it now.
Good. When do you test?
Well, the uh what Christina told me is for for me to do this session, and then they would open it up.
Okay.
So I guess uh I'm supposed to contact Christina tomorrow or um. To see if it's gonna be opened or, because she said that Noe told them that um. Uh for me to do the session today, and then they would open it up.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure they will, and the thing is, is that you you know these, you know these things. It's just a matter of you being not overthinking it, just going with what's there in the text. And identifying those those descriptors, those keywords. And making sure that your answer choice covers each of those, each of the ones that you identified.
But do you think that all the stuff or or what do you think? What is your opinion on?
Well, I think you do know the stuff, you've answered all of them correctly up until now. A couple of them, like.
My assessing, I'm I'm probably talking about my assessing the questions. Am I okay on that or?
I think so, identifying the keywords and assessing it, yeah. Um, I definitely think that you need to um. Or that it would be fruitful for you to go back to domain one and domain three. And to look at the the competency, the descriptors. So that you know what they will be, what they think that you should you should be doing as as the. The teacher in the classroom, because those are where the answer answer choices are going to come from. Um, you know. The one that they gave us, for instance, about first grade and them being that concrete learners. That's Jay's theory of the different uh stages of learning. And so I think that those things you know, it's just a matter of looking at the descriptors. And being careful and judicious with your final answer. What do you think?
Uh, yeah, I think I agree with you on that.
Okay, let's take a look at this one. A teacher arranges, changes the arrangement of the desks in the classroom from rows to a circle facing the center. Which of the following is the primary benefit of this adjustment? So what is the question asking of you? What are the keywords, what descriptors there? And then we'll take a look at the answer choices.
Okay, uh changes of arrangements. Rows to a circle facing the center. What primary benefit of the adjustment?
So how is this benefiting the activity best for this change? Varying students' view of the classroom posters and instructional aids. Maximizing maximizing student opportunities for interaction and discussion. Establishing a direct line of vision between the students and the front of the classroom. Allowing students opportunities to move freely around the classroom.
Okay, this one, uh I've had it before. And even on the practice, I think, I always answer B. Uh, because varying students' view of the classroom poster and instructional aid, that's not.
No, that's not.
Very issue why the the circle is made. Okay, establishing a direct line of vision between the students and the front of the classroom, okay, that has nothing to do with it.
No, and and I don't even think they can see it because they're facing the center, so some of them have their backs to the front of the class, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay, allowing students opportunities to move freely around the classroom, okay, they're not playing musical chairs or.
No, they're not, hopefully not.
So, well, we got so deep.
Yes, okay, definitely, and so always, if you're trying to do like a a large classroom discussion. Changing the seats to a circle, um oval, whatever. Is going to make it to where everybody feels like they're involved in the discussion. In an English class, if I have my desks in a row and we're discussing discussing a chapter. Someone in the very first, at the front row, front desk in the row is um gonna be engaging in the discussion. But the people in the back of the classroom might not feel in the discussion, because they're seeing it back, they're barely hearing it. And it's much more fruitful if you change the desks for the day, so that everybody can see each other. And everybody feels as though they're part of the conversation. So yes, that is correct. Um arranging classes to maximize eye contact, a teacher can promote a safe, engaging classroom environment. So always safety is the biggest issue, respect, and maximizing engagement. Let me see, which of the following is the most effective informal strategy? For continuous monitoring of student learning? So we have several key words here, what's the question asking of us and what keywords should we look for? Or should we pay attention to?
Okay, most effective informal strategy. Continuous monitoring student learning.
Okay, so we're looking for the most effective, there might be one effective, two effective ones in there. We're looking for an informal strategy, that's important, because there's a difference between formal strategies and informal strategies. And we're looking for continuous monitoring, not just once, not sporadically. A continuous monitoring of student learning, so all of those little pieces, those keywords, those are important. And those make other answer choices wrong, so let's take a look. Administering benchmark assessments to track progress. Using formative assessments at the end of a unit. Questioning students during daily class discussions and incorporating graphic organizers. To teach key concepts for each unit of study. So which of the following is the most effective informal strategy? For continuous monitoring of student learning?
Okay, ministry administering benchmark assessments to track progress, that's continuous monitoring.
So you're asking, is it the most effective, is it an informal strategy, and is it continuous monitoring of student learning?
Okay, most effective, I don't know yet, uh because I haven't read the other ones, but it is an informal strategy. For continuing monitoring the student learning.
A benchmark would be informal or formal?
Well. Let's see, we'll go back to that, because uh. Benchmarks, I I think is just like, okay, no, I I get it now, okay. No, it's it's a formal.
Yes.
Okay, using formative assessments at the end of the unit, okay, that's continuous monitoring.
But it's formative.
Formative, okay, questioning students during class, daily class discussion. Okay, that is informal, and you monitor students' learning by as by asking questions. Okay, that could be it. Incorporate graphic organizers to teach key concepts for each unit of study. Okay, I know that graphic organizers is a big issue.
But but that one doesn't even say incorporating graphic organizers. It is, graphic organizers are awesome for teaching units of study. But remember, we're looking for the most effective informal strategy for continuous monitoring.
I think it would be C, questioning students, because uh if I remember correctly, uh to. I think it would be C, questioning students, because, uh, if I remember correctly, to get their higher order thinking skills going. You would question them to. To, uh, to find out a prior knowledge of what they know, and then, uh. It would give you. Uh, I guess an idea to assess. Or monitor where they are in the learning process, so, I don't know.
Which one are we, yes, option C, because the teacher is continuously monitoring student understanding and can. Adjust the instruction as needed, um, D, which is. A good strategy is incorrect, um. This is an appropriate strategy for introducing a new concept, rather than a way to informally assess understanding. So graphic, that graphic chart, or that graphic organizer was the best way to introduce a topic, but not to assess informal assessment. On student understanding, on their learning.
Got it.
If they had said, if this question had said, most effective informal step, uh, strategy. For continuous monitoring of student understanding of new concepts in a unit. Then it would be incorporating graphic organizers to teach key concepts for the unit. If it were in the beginning, and if the objective were to monitor understanding of work, and, and their understanding in the beginning, so. That's why it's so important to take a look at, to think of all of the key words before you make your final answer choice, to make sure that the one that you're choosing is. The best, cuz remember, there is always going to be these two really good ones. Oh, one is gonna be better than the other, and the way that you can decipher that is, is going to be through those two words. Let's see. Let's see what time, what time period, we're, we're already eight sixteen. Let's do one more, and then. When, when do you, oh, I already asked, when you test again, you're going to. Um, I'm gonna tell them tomorrow that I think that you're, you're, you're. Should be good to go, but if you would like to, we could have another study session before and do. Go through the rest of the questions, or at least, you know, fifteen more questions.
Yeah, like maybe, uh, I don't know, uh. Maybe if you can do like one session a week with me for, until I test.
Sure, that, that's fine, yeah, definitely, some people have more than one person, though, sometimes, I mean, today, two other people were supposed to attend, they didn't come. But, um, it's always better if, the more that come, cuz we get to see like other people's thinking and perspectives. And, uh, it helps us to pick apart the questions a bit better, so they may, there may or may not be other people, but do you mind? Hello?
Okay, now I can hear you now, it froze up again.
Sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay, um, see, because I think this is helping me a lot, and just by studying the other, uh. Like the study dot com, I mean, I, I've, uh, I know a lot of the stuff and all that, but I guess it's just by analyzing. Like, like we're doing right now, and this is really helping me a lot, so.
Absolutely, this helps everyone, thinking about our thinking, and this test is tricky, and there's many as to every test, and it's very important. To go in prepared and to know the way that they're gonna come at you, and sort of the tricks and what to look for, so yes, I, I also believe that this is a fruitful activity for you.
Yeah, and starting next, uh, on the thirteenth, uh, I'm gonna have my band students, uh, coming in, so. I'll be probably working in the morning, uh, with them.
Okay.
Until, until school starts, and once school starts, then I'll probably be working with them, like in, in the afternoon.
Okay.
Or if I can set them up in the morning, then I'll, I'll try to set them up in the morning, uh, cuz we have, my, my target date is. My target, uh, my target date is September seventh for the first football game.
For the first of what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
My target date is September the seventh for the first, uh, home game.
Oh, awesome, I think that that's totally doable, and I, and I think that you'll be prepared for, for that.
Okay, do you, uh, do you do them on Saturdays as well, or?
I can, I can do them on Saturdays, I mean, I, I don't usually, but I can, sometimes I do them on Sundays as well, like Sunday evenings. Um, but yeah, I, I definitely can, we can do.
You know, you know, you know what, maybe probably since I have to give the kids off, uh, on Wednesdays, because of church day, or whatever. Maybe, uh, I don't know, uh, if you wanted to discuss it with the, the students, uh, and if it'd be a good day for you also Wednesdays.
Sure, yeah, definitely, I, I do do sessions on Wednesdays, normally those are content days, but I can do a PPR on a, on a Wednesday.
Okay, and you know, probably what, about the same time, about six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would be great, then.
Awesome.
So, uh, we, do we just log in like we did, or?
Yeah, I will send you the link.
Okay.
Um, mientras, I would like for you to look at the competencies. And just like I tell my students in the, in my English class, to, to, um. Highlight anything that they are unfamiliar with, or, um. I'm marking the text, if you find a concept that you're not familiar with, highlight it. Google it quickly, just jot something down, or highlight it, that way we can discuss it when we, when we have our meeting on Wednesday.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay, I have a toddler coming at me crying, so I'm gonna have to let you go, but I will email you. Um, with the link, and remember to look over the competencies, and we will work on it, and you will pass, no worries.
Can you, uh, do me a favor?
Sure.
Uh, can you, uh, ask him to see if they're gonna open the test?
Yes, I absolutely will.
Cuz I know that the earliest I can take it would be September the eighth.
Okay.
Like maybe mid, or maybe, yeah, like mid-September, maybe taking it.
Yes, I definitely will.
Okay, can you send me an email?
Yes, uh, wait, after I ask them?
Uh, if you can send me an email, they're gonna open it up, or have Christina.
Yes, absolutely, after I talk to them, I will, uh, send you an email to let you know that they opened it up for you.
Okay, I appreciate it, okay?
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, let me know if you need anything.
Okay, have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Mom.
Hi, baby.
He talked to him.
Hold on, my lovely, I have to.
How do you end it?
I don't know how to do this.
Okay, do we just get?
One moment, I don't.